I don't know. I don't know, some people...
That would be kind of scary.
Thank you.
Hey. What's your schedule look like? We got another first responder interview today. What's your schedule look like? I will set it up as soon as I can and I'll let you know. Well, that's cool.
I need these up for guys.
Cool.
So, it's a thank you part.
Oh, very nice.
So, I don't, I don't know how many people, but this is your picture. Here's the guy's seat.
Okay.
Okay, well, there's ten of you.
The picture on the, for the Red Cross, they didn't have full confidence.
Well, there's ten of you that are thank you for helping.
Thank you. Yeah, you need me to do that, don't you? Very long.
Yeah, here in my garage.
But there's the guy, so...
So, then there's some red stuff.
Oh, really?
Um, yeah, the two are the...
Yep, she does. Specifically us.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you want them tonight?
No, tomorrow.
Yeah, I have, so I'll be right in a minute.
Yeah, now already a clock.
Yeah. Yeah.
Tomorrow, I have, I am now on tomorrow, but tomorrow is...
I have to go to tomorrow morning, but I'll be home again.
Yeah, afternoon.
And I'll find that the two that, the two that are launches are hang on all, the other ones are... Uh, pipe, but I know which ones they are.
No.
But yeah, they're fine. I can share them. Oh, I'm warming here.
Where was it was hot?
It was, it would have been really bad outside if I had lived with that wind.
It was up there and it's eighty-two degrees in that house.
Yeah. And, and I never know whether it's, oh, yeah, I think you should hear someone break my sweat check. Problem is, I don't think we need it tonight. How many eight?
That's it. I just wanted to see what we have.
Eight, yeah. Yeah.
A little more. Little people. And then the almighty training.
Yeah.
We can stop these in a while.
Okay, so we only have to do one and then do one thing completely.
Right. Well, I can make up a few more.
Yeah.
But, so yeah.
A little sincere.
Well, hopefully, maybe it gets a few more people to sign up.
Right.
Oh, and for all that first responder training, I can get a copy of proof that we paid you. That's my name.
Sure.
Because that will be after tonight.
Yeah, well, we should process it. Better than process it.
You do throw it in my box, it doesn't matter, before next Tuesday, because if I have proof we paid it, then I'll reimburse it. I've done CCEMS.
You're on that DMR.
Please show. Tell me, count, count.
Oh, my, then now, so that'll be here.
That's good. It's designed.
First come, right?
All right.
First coming.
I suppose you can read the year before it or like I get down on it.
Yeah, I like it.
I like my add-on, I know.
Okay. Oh, I mean...
It's not true.
Yeah. I thought we had a...
Yeah.
They don't give the contract for the most of it, so it's going to be social.
I, yeah, I guess I...
I'll just... Yeah.
And then for the... I always get a pass.
Okay. Yeah. No.
More? Okay. Just, there's, there's...
Assessors. Assessors.
Stop.
I have a set first. I have a set first. They have a set first.
Pretty nice, I could change that. Six thousand dollars, she was... Six thousand dollars. Oh, for the question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, for this thing, which we tend to leave. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, that's the next. Then, um, Murphy and all the three types, yeah. Yeah. I know they're good at how they come into that place, but I don't know. They probably just draw it up. And that's going to be...
Can you make a dodge if you saw that?
The dodge hit will be on Tuesday. Yeah. And I asked them what we could throw in. They said as long as it's in foster and church and personal household courage. So, anything building, anything, and we will not adjust whatever, so, thank you. Yeah, Tuesday.
Okay.
George, do you have the actual application?
I turned that in.
These are all blank, so that's the application.
They had me do it online.
And you don't need a copy?
Didn't I have any graphs of that in there?
No, you just have maps.
I included the maps. But everything...
And they have the resolution, where it can access map.
I'll look them up, too.
Yeah. Otherwise, all of these are blank.
Yeah, because I, what I had to do was I think I had to compose and then, you know, paste into the different fields that they had. I'm, I'm, I might have it on my computer. See if I can come up with it.
Did you want this back to organize it or...
Yeah, I, so you mean the application too, huh?
No, the city should have, the city should have an application. I know, but we have this, we have this, a copy of what you have inside.
A description. They don't, they don't accept anything except online.
If there's charge, they do charge. Or, or then we, she put these things in the chat, and so I'm going to tell them the next time we have to switch it. That's, and that's all. I have to, I had to tell them, there's the only thing I have. There's a, I'll just switch it. And then, then what if there's something you can return? But then, I don't know. What do you love? And of course, it's promised we die on the tenth, eleventh, nineteenth, which is weekend. I've already told them when they... Well, she wanted to do a during the column celebration days. Because that's where we are in Houston. Grandma was from college. So she wanted to do a during the column celebration day, so we're going to the celebration day, so. But, anyway. I said it's... There was a, a search. Say that again. The hot number one? Oh, yes. The him and her, my, 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 my sister, who is too late, I'm going to go. Still, I have that too. One year, my uncle, one. He just ate me some.
Welcome aboard. Blood legions.
Good day, United States of America. And to the Republic, for which stands in one nation, under God, in the visible, with the thirteen inches of ground.
So, coming, um, I want to just make short mention, in fact, this is nine eleven, what is it, seventeen years ago or whatever it was? Pretty nasty stuff happened in New York City. And it's still happening today, I guess, with responders affliction with, uh, program. You know, mess that was created over there, but anyway. So, just that being said, um, may they rest in peace and may they, may they heal their memories. So, um, Morgan, you going to tell us about Mon Pot or what?
Right. In just about a month, and all of our members are in, and watching like in town. So first of all, I want to thank the city for its support and help. The first responders and the fire department were most wonderful. And Dave and Bernadette and Diane have been great all through the year of helping us, so much appreciated. We, we've received real positive feedback. We orchestrated four new events. The Time To Remember, the Kids Treasure Hunt, the Battle Of The Flags, and the Fireworks. And they also go off extremely well. The Kids Treasure Hunt had almost a hundred kids that participated in it, and were very pleased, and are going to do it again. The vendors, the volunteers, the general public were just getting really positive feedback, so that was all really good. Some of the vendors have already made commitments for next year. The Red Cross has already booked the date, so they'll be back for another blood drive next year. They were real positive. They got sixteen donors, and fifteen of them are new donors, so they were really pleased. Their goal is twenty-five next year, so... Overall, we have three TV stations, one live radio interview. We have really increased our social media, so now we have six hundred and twenty-one followers, which means that we get a hit. Every time we get hit, we get several thousand that sees, sees our, our, our events, so that's really positive. Strong newspaper coverage, pre and post, we got a lot of coverage this year. We did a videotape of the Time To Remember event. We had a footage taken for a future movie that's going to be done about Mon Pot. We had a professional photographer come and take pictures for the archive. And so, for numbers, estimated festival attendance over the three days, and I'm being very conservative, and this number came from feedback from our vendors and from people that had, had numbers at the event, it was like twenty-five hundred. And that was a pretty conservative number. Number of volunteers for pre, post, and the event day was a hundred and sixty-two, and I'm also being very conservative with that number, because I did not include my fire department. And we averaged twenty hours per volunteer, so that was a total of three thousand two hundred and forty volunteer hours of the event done. Our general funds, we took in a little over ten thousand. And half of that was in cash donations, which was pretty wonderful. We also have a balance in our pageant of five hundred and thirty dollars, with enough money to send our girl to St. Paul and Carnival. So we got one coming to represent our townships and our city this winter. All our bills are paid, and we have nearly five thousand for startup cash for next year. And our fundraising will start in January this year. And the plans are already started, and the kids are getting ready to hear up for next year already. And our first startup, our wrap-up startup meeting is on Thursday. So, we feel really good about it.
Yeah, you, you did a lot of work. And had some good weather go along with it, too.
Oh, that's con, that was controversial. Not everybody thought that was the way. I said no rain, everybody said they were dying in heat.
Oh, well, I guess it's a perspective. But, uh, sounds, sounds good, thank you.
Yeah.
Well done. Anybody else have any thoughts, reactions? Moving on to the consent agenda, again, I want to separate the minutes of August sixteenth, two thousand eighteen, for the same reasons that I have on the past, um, from the consent agenda, where simply all consent will pass. Anyway, on that consent agenda, I have a couple of questions about the man-child report. What does F A O P stand for?
F A P.
Oh, it's on every page, F A O P. F A P, F A O P. At the top of the second of the last column before, before the totals, you see column heading on, on the dispersion page.
Those are the, I don't know what the abbreviation stands for, those are the codings.
Okay, codings for what account to, those two. Okay. Um, I notice on the, everything that's associated with payroll, um, those codings are blanked, blanked out. And it seems like there was some, you know, deliberate, you know, intent, what, what...
I'm sure it's because you take, and the others aren't, because they're here. So that is considered a part of the, anything that's related to payroll. It's identifiable, so, so I didn't realize that you were taking your packets.
So, what's, what's private about this, what's, explain it to me.
Anything that's identifiable to what our net income is, is private.
The fact that, what account you're drawing your salary on?
Identifiable, yes.
So, you could charge this, as far as I'm concerned, to any account, and I wouldn't know it. You might charge the whole, you might charge your whole pay, but, you know, there's sixteen hundred, almost two thousand, over two thousand dollars worth of payroll checks, and I don't know out of which account they come from, so... And you find that to be okay? That's, again, uh, putting up a barrier of, of, I don't know, lends me to think what, what's there to be hidden.
For the record, I have mine showing.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I, he's telling me, yeah.
We don't take them all?
We don't take the information of our books and keep it in our own, and we keep it back here. That's why mine's so thick, because all that information is out here.
All right. I'll have to check with, check into that, because that doesn't seem to be right there. I should not be able to view... I should not be able to view what's going on here, and view it in my home or wherever, you know. It's, it's the city's government, it's the, it's the people's money, and this is, this is public data, as far as I can understand. But you haven't explained to me why it's, why it's private. I wanna also, uh, again, reiterate, uh, the appreciation from Mayor Ahulman for his donation of five hundred dollars, um, and, and very generous. I don't know where his heart, you know, where he found it, and it's hard to do that, but, do you know him?
I know him.
Yeah, that was, that was really something.
Very influential, too.
Yeah. Your memory for the hard part, I forget, so. With that, that was interesting. Dave, what did you paint?
What's that?
What did you paint?
Pick your tables?
What?
Pick your tables, we say.
Pick your tables, okay. Okay, uh, again, moving the minutes from August sixteenth, regular council meeting. So, we're, uh, voting on the budget meetings, man's report claims, and, uh, produce of three ninety-six for the lead, for the lead city, and thirty dollars for the mayor, look for a motion on that.
I'll make a motion.
Motion is made, seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Administration Department.
You're gonna move on the minutes?
I'm hearing, motion for.
I'll make a motion, approve the minutes.
Okay, motion is made.
I'll second that.
Seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Um, Administration Department.
Okay, um, regular, daily, weekly, and monthly work. On August twenty-first, I met with Tyler from USDA for a compliance inspection. I'm still awaiting his, um, the results of that. And then, um, I prepared for and attended the budget meeting, and within their packet, there's awards of grant applications that I submitted.
Pretty busy, uh, Monday, uh, sixteenth, thirteen hours, you worked, you remember that day? Not at all? You, you don't recall whether the, I know this is gonna be derogatory and accusatory, but, you know, I'm just wondering if the office would open during that whole thirteen hours. It was thirteen hours, there was a-
There's things of cash, there was a cash delivery.
There was an hour and a half for a fire.
There was a cash delivery. And you're welcome.
For what?
For the good work I did for the grants.
No, I was going to get to that.
Sure.
If that was what you were working on, and I was going to thank you for it, but you don't recall it, so, you know, I'm, I'm just saying, you said you worked on it, whatever, I don't know. No, I appreciate that, but I don't, I don't know, I just wanna know what's going on, that's all. You hide account information from me, you hide hours from me, you know, so, you know, so I just, I'm kept in the dark about a lot of stuff. Uh, Utilities Department.
Um, when we, we get a specific date for the construction on the water tower, I've already talked to Diane and Bernadine, who should be sending out a letter to conserve water during that time, that we might be just dumping into waste for the duration of the project. And, uh, with the pressure filters and stuff like that, that, um, might be pushed up to the limit, so, I want everybody to kinda be aware of that. We don't have enough, we don't have a firm date on it yet, the, uh, manufacturer, the company that's working on that central tank is waiting on that new extra manway that, um, we had to put in, that was mandated by the Department of Health, so. Once they receive that, then they should be able to, and a lot of committee, they'll be able to give us some more specific on that. I've got my report in front of you, uh, hopefully discharged, the pond at the secondary is full. And like I said, I'll probably have to discharge again in, um, probably October again, and hopefully, hopefully not in November, but if it rains some more, we might have to do that, too. Uh, let's see, what else? I think the city has to think about what they're gonna do with the old mud block pit. I got that on the report there, it is a liability, 'cause it holds water. I think part of it can be drained while it's at the end, but Kevin, come here with this hole, but I don't know if it's deeper than that drainage ditch or what, but something should be done, so it isn't, you know, plus it's a mosquito trap back there anyway, with, with-
Stay in the water.
Is that not Maunpa Kettle property?
I don't know, I went out with it.
Mm-hmm, still there? So, 'cause it's still kind of, it's been flooded, but.
And the group of people that made the mess and left it for me, just walked away, Chris and all of them. Last year at the meeting, Chris and Jen said that they had to do something about it, and they chose not to do anything. So, no, they just left the mess.
Okay. Could it maybe be addressed, have the meeting on?
It could be, or we could just let it back, go back, we talked about it, and we might just let it go back to the county. Because why should we bother to keep it anymore? But that whole situation has become non-useful for us, so why would we bother to keep it? Then the county can worry about it.
I think Dave raises a good point about liability and more than lies, so. I need to be part of the discussion, whatever happens.
Being risky, I know.
I don't know where the city's responsibility lies.
Just walked away from it.
What timeframe are you looking for the county to get it, take it back, it'd be, it'd be years, wouldn't it?
Permanent?
Would it be years before the county got back, then, or how is that going?
All we have to do is quit paying the taxes.
Yeah, with them, there's a timeframe.
But then it's for a certain long of years, nothing quits. We can't be responsible for something that nobody has been responsible for for thirty-three years. Nothing has been done there and taken care of that.
Well, we'll have to figure out what the, what the city's liability is with that, and all.
Now, it's not that we won't work with you, but we will not do it alone and be totally responsible.
Well, and, we're not, apparently, we're, we're at a bone of contention here, and I don't think this is the place to get it figured out. Move on, Dave, anything else?
Yeah, I've been in contact with Ritter and Ritter, they're going to, uh, come back this fall yet, and, uh, start doing their third of the city sewer cleaning. It helps with the, uh, the peninsula cities' liability, if we show that we're, uh, maintaining our sewer lines for sewer backups. So they're gonna start on the northeast part of town again, and they'll start to do a third, a third, a third again, and either start over again, or wait a year, or do whatever, start again, so. And, um, you have a roof bid for the, that's building in front of you, from Miller's Roofing. They're the only ones that, um, I called, contacted Beaver Roofing, and, um, talked to Steve, and he said that he would, wouldn't be able to do it till next year, at the earliest. He's backed up. But then I've been talking to, uh, Lower Yard, and they're talking that possibility of, uh, increasing prices up to twenty percent for next year, so.
Didn't you do some work on the roof?
Uh?
Didn't you do some work on the roof?
I did on the ridge, I got that sealed up, but, uh, then old nails and stuff like that from thirty-plus-year-old steel was, so, maybe an older saw.
So this is, this is totally replacing that roof?
Yep, yep, yep.
And doing, putting the ridge ring on?
Putting a bent ridge on there, and putting a regular steel, because the steel that's on it now is actually too short.
Yeah, okay.
What the, uh, the veterans, the, the, yes, there, or the veterans group, yes, there?
Yeah, Legion.
Yeah, Legion, um, would they be, yeah, they'd be-
I haven't talked to them yet, and I just wanna see if they get the ball rolling, but person can ask, and we'll see if they-
At least wasn't covered by insurance?
No, it was, yeah.
For hail, there was no hail damage?
No, it's certainly on steel, and all, we didn't have any luck.
Well, certainly is not in the budget that I saw, either this or next year, so.
So they'll fix it?
It's a problem, but they have to be-
There's ten thousand in the budget for nineteen, for building repair, so it's in, it's in this year's budget. Oh, okay.
Okay, we'll take a look at that.
And approach the Legion, I know they're not a rich legion, but. Are you paying a percentage, maybe? If we can do that, I mean, we own the building, the city does, so. I think it should be repaired, otherwise it's just gonna, all the improvements that were done to the inside are just gonna be ruined.
Agreed, agreed.
The insulation of, of the, of the, of the molding?
Mm-hmm, and that's not good, it needs to be-
The work that Alden did, we have been watching it, and it hasn't been leaking since Alden, Alden and, um, another guy went up there. And it, it's quit leaking so far right now, so. Good that it doesn't continue, no, the lights are working out, too.
Um, anything else, Dave?
Um, yeah, so right off, I'd like to, um, start looking around for, uh, for a replacement for the city tractor. Something that, um, has brakes or something, and is a little bit safer to drive, so it could be used more often to off-road and do things around, and not have to worry about the brims breaking out, and stuff.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Um, I got a couple of questions for you, uh, permangene pump, is that up and running?
No, I'm waiting on the check bells that, I'm waiting on new check bells for the line. The, um, ones that, you know, they look good, there's a double set check bells, they were allowing water to come back in and dilute the solution into the tank, so. So I got them coming with, uh, better this week, so.
So that's the, that's the latest, uh, in a continuing saga. I wanna go through a little bit of this history, about, over thirteen months ago, we purchased this permangene pump for close to eleven hundred dollars. And I've asked about the pump, I don't know, maybe three, four, maybe half a dozen times, and each time, you've said, all I need is this, all I need is that. And, can we return this pump? I mean, it's sitting there, eleven hundred dollars, and we haven't, let me finish, Dave. And, and we've been, I've been told on notifications, yeah, it'll be done by next, next meeting, it'll be done by next meeting, at least four times. I, I make a motion that this thing is done next, by next meeting. With, um, do you have everything you need to do it?
When the, um, check bells come, yeah, I'll have it done.
When the check bells come?
I told you, this week, and the guy comes from Hawkins.
Okay, so you should have it this week, and it should be done by the next, by next meeting?
Yeah.
It will be done by next meeting?
Well, the tape is in place, the board is in place, I'm just waiting on it, because if water goes back in the tank and dilutes out the potassium permangene, it's not at the right ratio to do any good at all, so it's just like throwing-
Thirteen months, Dave, thirteen months.
Yeah, well, that pump is probably, yeah, it's probably at fifteen hundred, I don't know.
Great.
Right?
It's worth nothing to us right now, because it's not working.
It's brand new, it's, it'll work.
Yeah, right, okay. I make a motion that, that we guarantee that Dave does that by next meeting. Uh, look for a second.
I'll second.
Motion is made and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, I just, well, I'm gonna just say, it's just, I'm, I'm glad that we're talking about this, and we're actually putting it on the record, that we needed to get it done, because it adds to the quality of the water, and that's what this is about, you know, this is not about anything but that. Um, any further discussion? Hearing, oh, go ahead.
Really, I can't do all that much good, it's other water power space.
It'll help.
It'll help with rusty water.
That's what the permangene pump does, take iron out of the water.
Take the rust part.
Rust is iron, dude.
It doesn't take it out past the filters, it doesn't, it take it out with some metal.
I know, it'll help, it'll help. The reason that we got it was it'll help the water quality, eleven hundred dollars, we spent that in that direction, per your request, by the way. So, I'm just looking to get this thing working. Motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Um, as far as the tank project, uh, I have, again, and I'm probably, you know, I'm not apologetic about this, getting involved with this. Um, I wanna run through the history here. June nineteenth, we approved of this, of Central Tank's bid. I called and talked to Central Tanks, Kelly Keane is the, is the lead honcho over there. On June twenty-ninth, ten days later, and I spoke with him, and he says, oh, really? We got your bid? Oh, I left a message with Brian, Brian Miller from MSA, and he never returned my call, or never returned my email, I don't know how he did it, but I said, yeah, you guys are, are the ones, so there's number one delay. For, for MSA sitting on their, on their hands, we still sent them a three thousand dollar check. Then, on July twenty-sixth, Central Tanks had a change order, July twenty-sixth. MSA informed Kettle River, August fourteenth, almost three weeks later, of this, of this change. And we voted on the sixteenth to approve that change for five thousand dollars. There was, and that change included the manway, which, uh, I, again, contacted both Brian Miller and Kelly Keane of Central Tanks and MSA respectively, and asked them, you know, are we on, are, are we gonna get this done before the snow flies? And, uh, and Brian said, among other things, the project is set to be completed this year. So, um, it was depending on the manway, but the manway is supposedly being shipped on Thursday the thirteenth, two days from now, and we'll receive it Monday or Tuesday, per Central Tanks services, Central Tanks Coles, I don't know if they're in, but, um. It's still not clear to me that this thing is gonna happen this year. I'm hoping it does, I trust it well, but if it doesn't, it's, we got the money set up, we're already paying on this money. So, uh, I would encourage you, Dave, Bernadine, whoever's involved with this, to be on top of this, and get this done. Yeah, Bernadine?
Well, when you ask, thank you for the update on the delivery of the manway, I have a couple of concerns. What is the name and manufacturer of the interior coating?
Yep.
We need to make sure that the tenant arrives a copy of the insurance, and we need to have a completion date.
Yeah.
What, what is your role in doing that?
I wanna get it done, this-
We have, everything's been parted, didn't you have it in September? They ordered the part, they still stated that they plan on coming this time.
No, they stated that it's set to be completed this year, that's what the stated, that's what they said that was, I'm relying on, I'm relying on Dave, I'm-
What happens when you do the tests, then they stop doing what they're doing, they start contacting staff, going, okay, didn't the paperwork get there, what's going on?
Is that, please, I went through the history, I went through the history of how MSA has just stopped, please, you're out of order, you're out of order, you're out of order. I was speaking.
Nope, I have, she recognized me.
You will get your chance, but I was speaking, I went through, I went through the history of MSA with their delays, and, and sitting- I went through, I went through the history of MSA with their delays and, and sitting on doing nothing, not even informing the company that we approved of, of the, of the project. And here we are, we approved of it on June nineteenth, we're sitting here, July, August, September. Three months later, snow's ready to fly. And I'm relying on you and Dave to, to do this, where Dave has already shown his reliability in following through on stuff.
Okay, that's enough.
Don't tell me, don't tell me, don't you, don't...
That's enough, insulting employees is very unprofessional. You need to stop.
Oh, who made, please?
George, that's a...
No, I'm not.
This whole project has been targeted to be done in September. Everything from day one has been targeted to be done in September. Well, I hope so too, your interference isn't appreciated.
My interference is not appreciated, you're out of order, you're out of order.
All right, well, that's, it wasn't a delay, those are all false statements, MSA did not do any delay. From day one, the targeting was doing the project in September. Setting up the, the money, the loans, the notes, everything was targeted for September. It's been no delays.
I never heard that. I asked for a, I asked for a date and I was never...
I told you multiple times, at prior meetings.
Yeah, right, okay. Anyway, I hope it gets done because this is... There's too many delays going on. Too many delays going on. And to consider, yeah. Insulting, I wasn't insulting, he's, I just demonstrated his, his...
George, enough, drop it.
Stop, don't tell me. Don't tell me what to do, all right?
Well, for everyone, please.
Let him hang himself, that's fine.
Yeah.
That's fine, all right. Um, hopefully it gets done. Um, let's see. Fire first responder.
Okay, we had two fire and three medical calls in August. And so far this month, we've had two fire calls and two medical calls. We've partnered with the Red Cross for their home fire campaign, I don't know if you guys saw that all on Facebook. Uh, we've got seventy-some smoke alarms now from them stored here. And, uh, the local number is just City Hall number. And I've coordinated with Bernardine just to get the information from the people that call weekly basis, so we can, uh, schedule times to go to their homes and install as many smoke alarms as necessary. Uh, it's a good PR move, it's also just good, I'd rather go in and put the smoke alarms in there than have to pull somebody out of a building, so. No cost to us, besides our volunteer labor, so, um, it's great, it's a great program. We've already got, at least I know, one call in. Couple of firefighters even grabbing, so, because they give it up. I think the threat was, how embarrassing would it be if, uh, he didn't have working smoke alarms in here at Fire Department, so. Um, I received a notification from the MBFDE, which is the Minnesota Board of Firefighter Training and Education, that we are eligible for two thousand four hundred and sixty dollars in training money this year, which is about double what we got last year. There are some changes in how we need to get the reimbursements as well, and I'm coordinating with Bernardine on that. It's a little more à la carte, where in years past, firefighter one and two with hazmat had it all done at the same time. Now they're changing it so you can take just firefighter one, less hours. The hope is that smaller departments can get more guys to volunteer, because it's less, requires less training to get going. Um, if they wanna take firefighter two later, you know, if it's something the fire department wants to pick, you know, handle, that's fine. But it doesn't all have to be at once anymore.
Who'll make that decision?
The state.
So legislature?
Yeah. Um, and then the way they bill is, will be a little different. It used to be that they would bill the universities directly, and then the MBFDE would just reimburse the money. But now you have to pass your certifications, which wasn't the requirement before. And then they're gonna bill the departments, and then we just need to submit for reimbursement. And they've actually got a fast pass thing, well, we don't even need to pay, we can just submit an invoice and they'll pay it. So it's not really, uh, we don't necessarily have to have the money in the budget for it, but they'll still take care of it. So that's good news, um, we're finally using it. Um, we've got three new EMRs that you guys are, we've already approved of, they start their training on Saturday in, um, Central East College. Full date there. There are four EMRs going, going through recertification.
How long does that have to be?
About every two years, correct, George? So every two years they have to get recertified. The gala tune-in for us comes right here, we just spend a couple of extra hours instead of seven to eight, we're like six to ten. And we did quite a bit done. So it should be done by the end of October, I believe.
Good.
We have a new EMR candidate that we need to interview as well, um, so that's something I'll work through with George. We purchased a veteran belt, it's a lift assist belt. We've got a few lift assist calls recently, and the ambulance has this exact belt, and we've heard nothing but good things about it, and we've used it, and, uh, it's been very handy. So, the discussion was, let's order one ourselves. We've got the, the donation, plus I believe we can get reimbursed for this from the Carroll County BMS group. So, I pulled the trigger on it, it was two hundred and seventy dollars total. And it's here, it's in our register. We received, um, you guys saw the paperwork on this, a six hundred and fifteen dollar DNR grant. That'll be applied towards our new permits. Is what the plan is for that.
And that one says, "Work must not begin under this grant."
Yes.
What does that mean?
Can't have ordered the stuff prior to the grant being accepted from both sides. Correct. Is that what that means? Uh, I do have a question on siren, have we got an update on that at all?
No, I was gonna contact DSC and see where they're at. Yeah, put the board, take the board in, I think we'll deal with that, so.
Yeah, yeah, so the siren is not working right now, I don't know if you guys, obviously you've heard, silence?
Maybe you hear it.
Right, right.
Great.
Oh, you won't hear it till tomorrow night, then.
You won't hear it. It's out of commission right now, um, there was an issue with the board?
The board was, um, it was stuck in the mode to receive any incoming call from any place.
And they've set it off essentially. So they're fixing it, but they said at least a week, and it's been, I think it's been a week.
It was a week last Friday.
But I informed, I informed Carroll County Dispatch that if they need us to set off a storm siren, we still have the nine-one-one attached to the fire hall, they just need to page the fire department to come here. Push the button essentially. But, uh, if we have fire calls right now, you won't hear the siren, so. When that's, well, you'll know when it's working again, I'm sure. Uh, and that is all I have. Do you have any questions?
No, but I do have a comment, because I was part of this this past weekend in Corona.
Okay.
And the Red Fire Department, who was represented by Thomas Singer. And he did an excellent job, please pass on the information, I think he knew, because I've thanked him quite a few times, but he did just a wonderful job with the kids, letting them go in and get the siren and pop the horn and spray a little water. They all enjoyed it a lot. So, yeah, kudos for Tom, he did a great job.
I will pass that on.
Okay.
And once again, uh, Kyle, you, uh, do a good job. Appreciate it, thank you. You should be going here, getting money, getting practical items, whatever. Here, here, keep it up, thank you. Uh, Building Department?
Hello, Dave, I have an ult, last Friday to re-inspect our previous inspections for nuisances. List is longer than it was when we went out last time, there's four people on there. Well, there was ten before, there's fourteen on there now, some people are gone and some are at.
Okay, um, these are all nuisance ordinance violations that we, uh, there's a, there's a poster child for that, for that, uh, fence in this, in this town, so. The old, the old power tap has got new debris, street side. That's just crazy, it's like a junkyard there. You, uh, I don't know, you need to do something, but it's, it's kind of a disgrace, you know? But he's allowed to get away with that without any kind of, any, any, nothing, nothing gets away with it. So, we gotta figure out how to, how to address that. Legal processes, what we gotta go through and... It's painful, painful and expensive. Anyway, um, anything else?
Nope.
Um, what about, oh, yeah.
Yeah, as far as, uh, Kenny goes, isn't it maybe time that we look into something to state pardon for mental health? You know, he is like really losing his...
I understand that, but I don't think that's our, our duty here.
Well, if it isn't ours, if it isn't his neighbor's, where is it?
So, we're not mental health experts here, we're trying to...
We can't get somebody to, you know, go visit him or talk to him or, you know, just like intervention before he harms himself or somebody else? I mean, he has a real, he's acting out here, obviously, and this could become a dangerous situation for our kids and our residents.
And if, and, and if that's the case, if you feel fearful, then maybe nine-one-one is the best call, you know? I don't know what the, the answer is to it, but he's in violation of our ordinances and that's all that I know. You know, and it's, it's a nuisance. I don't know about his mental state or whatever, I can just imagine, but that's not our job. Our job is to try and keep order in the city, that's all. Uh, so, what I would, um, okay.
You guys were working on an ordinance.
Yeah, yeah, and we have made some progress with that, you know, I mean, so how we proceed is, is, uh, it's kind of, uh, I don't know, unknown at this time. Any ideas that anybody's got? We talked about it.
You got letters, there's a process, you have to send letters, don't you?
You send letters and then he has to come here, and then if he doesn't show up, then you gotta take him to court.
Right. Well, let's, what's the next step in that process then?
Send him another notice, and if he doesn't do anything within thirty days, then it's gonna have to go to the lawyer.
Yeah, and we've, we've appropriated funds in that direction too, so. But, uh, yeah, and the wording on the, on the letter would give, uh, you know, thirty days?
It's in the ordinance, it says something, and I don't remember the timeframe, but he, he's asked to come to the council and explain why he hasn't done anything.
He has been asked, is out the letter states?
That's what it would, now, if he doesn't do anything with this, this batch, then, then he's gonna have to come, well, he doesn't have to come.
No, he can do whatever he wants.
Right. You know, he has to come here and explain why he hasn't done anything, and nothing happens and the lawyer takes over.
Right, we'll have to follow through.
With, with that letter, attach cats to it. Seriously. I'm done, fed up. I pick up cat poop in my yard constantly, and I'm sick of it.
I know, it's, it's, it's...
And if they, if he's, if, if there's rumors that he's took, took them cats up there in the state, that's bull crap, because there's kittens running all around over there, you know?
Is there an ordinance?
The agency said that he paid for sixty cats that he saved.
Is there, is there, in the nuisance ordinance about, uh, cats?
Yes.
About animals?
More than three.
And they have to be licensed?
And they have to be licensed, and you can't, um, feed feral cats, which they are.
All right, so.
And you say that they're not his cats?
Well, last time.
Just like, just like he says, you know?
That's why you go there to take a fit picture of his feet, of that feed bucket that's in front of his door. If they're not his cats. He's, if, if he's not feeding, if they're not his cats, he's feeding feral cats, which is also a nuisance violation.
Yeah, just, I would just, you know, with the letter reference the ordinances that he's, that you figure he's violating, and maybe even give him a copy of the ordinances.
Maybe, maybe as a council, the council should compose this letter.
That might be a, yep. I think you're, uh...
If it comes from the council rather than just... I don't think it could, well, I mean, it may hold, I may not know if it'll hold any weight with him, but...
Well, we're the, we're, we're the decision makers here, and, and, and we're the, we're the ones that are gonna hire the lawyer, we're the ones that are going to go through the process, you know, so, um, who wants to take on that responsibility of putting a letter together? That would address the issues that we've raised here, the nuisance issues we've raised here.
I'll be kind of good of an idea if it comes to me.
Well, it would be something that all of us would be, would, would, would sign off on, and, you know, you could come up with something that would give us something to work with and that we can maybe add to, you know, or, or, you know, buff up to include everything that we wanna say. If you could be the, the catalyst, the starter on this, you know, that would really help us, help everybody in the city.
The Sheriff's Department is involved with the cats already.
Yeah, we've talked this year, so.
But they're not gonna, there's, he's not, why, they're getting lost?
So he's not gonna do it?
They're not gonna do anything about it?
No, it's, it's our job.
So, you know, I think the sheriff is gonna, the detective and anything else is sending over the information, it depends on how hard it is.
Right. It's in our lap, we, we need to do what we, what we can and should do, and, uh, but if we don't do anything, guaranteed nothing will happen.
I suppose, yeah. See what happens.
Yeah, see what you can come up with.
You're the closest to the situation.
Yeah.
You're fully aware of what's going on, I would feel ill-informed to write it.
Yeah, with more information, take the...
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, you just drive by and...
Yeah, take, take the picture.
You only gotta drive by, he doesn't want you to drive, just drive by the main street and...
Right, make a case, make a case that we can, you know, that we can work with and say, hey, all right, this is what we're gonna ship to the lawyer or whatever, get his ideas and which way we should go.
Right, whatever. So would this be the second letter then? Has she already sent him the first one? Is that correct?
Yeah, this is the second one, but he, since the first one, he's added to the collection.
Right.
In both, in both places.
Right.
Who should deliver this letter, you don't just send it?
It'd be first class.
I think we should send a return receipt.
You should have somebody delivering it, like the sheriff. You need to have it certified and make him send it along.
Have him go pick it up at the post office and sign, return receipt.
Sign that he's received that letter.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's on the receipt.
Right, it's like, it's like eight bucks at the post office or something like that.
Yeah, we need to...
They get, they put a yellow card in the box or whatever, yeah.
Yeah, it's a signed receipts.
Yeah. And we get a, and the city will get a copy of his signature that said, "I received this letter." So... Alright, see what you can come up with. Pictures, I want pictures of that, that people can order.
Um, well, the city guy should be doing that every time they drive by.
Can we do that?
Well...
We have them already.
If they're, you know, violation of the city ordinances, yes. And if they're, I mean, it's, you don't need to, I mean...
Right, so, yeah, put it together with the pictures and we'll talk about it next meeting, put it on the agenda.
We have pictures of one cat being...
Hmm?
We have pictures of one cat being, uh, left in, or it's enough that he's feeding.
Yeah, he's feeding, he, he maybe says that right, he's, he's feeding feral cats, so...
Good, and, and preponderance of evidence, the more we compile...
Since they're feral cats and he claims that, can't they be captured?
He sabotages the traps.
Yes.
But if they're mine, your property, because the cats are coming on their, or of mine, you know, the, the trap is up by my house.
Last year they tried, it was too late in the year. Yeah, it was, uh... It was October, they put the traps out, and it was snowing, and when it was, it's snow flies, those cats won't come out. They gotta go nighting.
So, yeah.
So...
So, anyway. See what you can come up with. Um... The city council, anything from the city council? Not anything, committees?
One example?
Good idea.
Superstar Commissioner Mark Tollard informed me that he was contacted by the manager of the campground in Moose Lake, and that they're full every year, and that they're coming not for the lake, but for the trails, and that they have a lot of yearly residents, and if you don't have room for them, they pay two thousand dollars a year, so even ten of them would be twenty thousand dollars. So, gives us new light there on the campground, and, uh, we're just gonna have the fellow from Moose Lake come and do a tour with him, and Kevin Perrott, check out the, how, how the road would go and stuff to do a...
Notification and...
Yeah, actual kind of...
Where is this?
Proposal. Our acres over there on the wellhead.
Near the ball field?
Yeah. So, with the full lots and the, that they're here for trails, and it's just all good sign. Other than that...
Um...
Oh, and we haven't heard anything from the state signing up on the few apartments, but it's a process that they have to go through, and it takes usually a couple months.
Okay. Gotcha. Any other committees? Okay, um, DNR grant, I apparently didn't include the, the actual wording of the, of the application. I'll look on my computer print, uh, to see if I could print out, uh, wording that I did, the, uh, that I did submit, but everything's online, so, um... I submitted it as such, and as soon as we submitted, kind of moved it, so... I'll, I'll do my best to find out what's going on. Um, six hundred and fifteen dollar award from Minnesota DNR. Thank you, Kyle. I think you were the one that basically did that, or...
I, uh, I filled out most of it. I'm sure that you helped me with the rest.
Thank you very much. Um, as well as the notification of the six thousand two hundred and fifty, um, award that will do well to help us defray the cost of the, of the water tower to apply that seems to the man lane that was... Had it on, yes, or is that accurate? It says safety climbing system and guard rail extension. So... Uh, that's what you actually add on that.
No, I just, uh, just take, just take the... The guard, it really, really...
But anyway, thank you very much, um... Yeah, real help, perhaps. Okay, uh, request for support letter to apply for Minnesota Department of Public Safety grant for turnout gear dryer, uh, application and dryer pole, um, provided here, which we see is like four, eight thousand dollars, and we get back. Proposal, how much in that?
Is it the same as last time, where it's based on your population or the size of your apartment?
Um, it's just based on what it's on you.
Okay, so it's a little different.
Fund the whole thing if it's happening.
Okay, so we're looking for the, the, the whole thing we funded, is really what we're looking for. And this is the first year, we got the washer several years ago, if you recall.
Mm-hmm.
This is the first year that they're putting dryers in the grant, so I think, I just wanted to throw our hat in the ring, and another good thing this year is we have to have this letter of support from the city, same... Support letter from the city, with the grant, that's who was got.
Good. Um, I guess I would, uh, motion to, um, provide that support letter to the Minnesota Department of Public Safety for the town here.
Final motion.
Motion made.
Are we doing for the letter?
For the letter.
And for applying, correct?
I don't know if we need a motion to apply. We just give the motion for the support letter, correct?
Yeah.
We get the letter, we're gonna apply, right?
Alright, motion's made, second. Um, now with this, uh, grant, um, do we need to purchase before we would find the amount of the, of the award?
Don't believe so. We don't have to purchase anything if we don't get the grant, correct?
Okay. Alright, um... Sounds like a null and lose situation to me. Anyway, they're just writing a letter here, so, um, any other further discussions? Hearing none, all those that favor say aye. Aye, pose, curious. Um, both budget and tax levies. I had a question. We discussed this at the, at the budget meeting last, a couple weeks ago, whatever it was, and on the second line, uh, it, the descriptor is Carlton County Auditor, comma, Tax Levy, and it went up to eighty-eight thousand two ten, an increase of eight thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Now... Does that mean that we're going to levy the citizens, our residents, with that much more money?
Do you want to explain it? I said, do you want to, you want to explain it from the meeting? It was explained several times.
That is, is the extra money that we're not using, when we, when we've paid off our debt.
Mm-hmm.
That, that, so we're, we're, that's, but...
Um, it was the refunding run in twenty-ten, which was twenty thousand four hundred and seventy-five.
That was gone.
That's paid off. You're replacing that with a general obligation water revenue note for twenty eighteen, which the payment will be twelve, twelve thousand thirty-seven ninety-eight, rather, up to twelve thousand thirty-eight.
So that's why we have an extra...
The balance is eight thousand four hundred and thirty-seven.
Okay, and so when I get my tax bill at the, whatever it is, it'll be relatively the same amount for the tax...
I can't guarantee that. Your, your values not changed, or, or what the state, what the city is levying is the same.
What the city is levying, then I don't, I don't, you know, I just want to make sure that there's not, you know, that we're not charging our citizens anymore than we did last year. That's all I'm saying, that we're not gonna take any more tax money than we did last year.
So we were spending twelve, twenty thousand, now we're spending twelve thousand.
Right.
That's the difference, and that is added to our main budget.
True, then why, my, my, my question is, why is it put under the item of tax levy?
Because those are prior taxes, so our taxes will not go up. It's just a portion of the taxes that we levied for the first bond is now, the second bond is a smaller portion of that bond, so, but we're not decreasing taxes, so that money goes back into our budget. The money we're not using, or not spending on the twenty grand. Instead of spend twenty grand, we spend twelve grand. When you come up with, or, whatever the, eighty-four thirty-seven up to eight.
Yeah.
So...
So just... Well, is there any tax...
So we're not gonna, so we're not going to collect any more than seventy-nine thousand to what we did last year from the, from the citizens, from the residents?
The taxes.
That's correct, okay. Good, just wanted to make sure that I was, you know, because...
No, just so you're clear, your taxes didn't change.
No, I, no, I'm just looking at the aggregate, as a, a big picture here.
What the city's levying is remaining the same.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of slow in that department, so I appreciate your patience with me. Um... And then, um... I don't know, there's, we pretty much hair-screwed everything else at the, at the meeting, so, um... That was the only concern I had. Anybody else have any other concerns?
He was gonna check on the chemical costs with Dave.
Oh.
Yeah, he felt that that was what was necessary. Now, for, okay, enough. That report must have been from Tonka.
What's that?
That report from Tonka, it mentioned something about if the city's budget allows the chlorine, is there another way to treat the water that wouldn't be so expensive?
Either, no, chlorine, it's either a liquid or a gas, and the gas is a lot more dangerous.
Okay, is that what he's talking about in there? Cause he said something about the city's budget allowing it or something, or, you know, will support it.
Yeah.
I can't remember what, where that was on what page it was, but...
Yeah, it was after all of our...
I just had that question. There was another way of doing it.
And, uh... The, um... When we were talking about the, the roof for the, for the Legion Building, um, that was assuming... Oh, would that be under the ten thousand dollar capital improvement under, uh, general government buildings? That's... Is that where you...
I think so.
On page two of three.
Yeah.
Okay, cause we have, that was originally, the intent was to work on the overhead door, which has, uh, on the far north, uh, door, and then for the fire hall, which has dry rot over it that, uh, needs quite a bit of attention as well, so, and they were, you know, so, that was the original intent of that, you know? A portion of that, what is it, say, three thousand dollars, no?
Six thousand, sixty-five hundred.
Sixty-five hundred, so that's, gonna chop into that a little bit, um, for this year, and then next year, there's another ten thousand dollar proposal, so... Okay. So that looks like we might be able to do something with both places. There's, um...
Question I had is, uh, we were saying that we're gonna allocate six thousand to, uh, to one of the superbills, one of our bond payments, if that's not...
It was subtracted.
Whether?
Yeah, I put it under, it's under the principal and interest on the supertrunk.
Oh, okay. Yes, sir.
Well, we, the phone expense, did we have a question on that also? Have I had a little more about the telephone expense than I have the, um, what time? Um, under, just first things for the water fund.
For water fund?
Yeah, I thought, maybe I didn't have it on my, there, I'll look.
No? All that you, the fact it changes?
I thought we did, maybe, yeah, I thought we dropped it down to seven fifty, maybe we decided not to after all.
You're correct.
Is the, uh...
Yeah, you're correct, I missed it.
Okay.
Is the, uh, does the internet, um, fall under that, the internet service fall under that?
Correct.
Okay.
So that would be changed to seven fifty?
Yeah, that's fifteen hundred, probably, there. So there's internet service provided over at the, uh, home house over there.
That's provided by, um, Genesis, so that's not, that's a service I think.
Oh, is that the new, uh...
Move step.
Move step guys? So is this, just this building that has...
We, we have it available, we get it, we don't use it, but it lowers the, the water bill, I mean, the phone bill to get the package with the internet service rather than just have a phone.
Yep, it does.
So we compare someone's lower.
It's crazy.
But we use Genesis because we're doing that.
It's a better service, is what you're saying.
It's free, isn't it?
Yeah, well, and we were all booked up and everything, let's emails and everything, we're sent through it, so...
Oh, okay.
There's no sense changing when negotiating the lower, um, telephone debt.
Any, uh... Any other... Questions or concerns or numbers? We missed you, Kyle.
Sorry.
I wasn't sworn in yet, so...
What?
Yeah. I was bored, I think I understood as well.
Yeah.
Well, I'm done. Sure missed it.
Um...
Okay. It's my favorite part.
Um, so... So, um, at least we gotta come up with a levy thing. It's my understanding, kind of collection from the... Budget meeting. So... If we just want to go there, we can go there, we can go with the whole levy, budget approval deal, wherever you guys want to go, we gotta come up with a levy thing. Then we can, if, if we want, how long, how long do we have to juggle? Then we can, if, if we want, how long, how long do we have the general numbers in the, in the bottom half after the levies, there?
Your doctor final budget at the December meeting, this is your proposed question.
Oh, so we're just, we're just looking for a motion as a proposed budget and final levy. Would that be accurate?
Make the motion to accept the budget as proposed, minus the seven, minus the correction at the seven fifty for the water, or, or the, uh, phone bill. Water? Waterfront?
Motion's made.
I'll second that.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Um, so, um... Anything else?
We're, uh, doing anything for the, the roof, roof?
Um... Is there anybody else in the area that does roofs? I know there's, there's gotta be somebody that does. Cause, uh, just, it's just kind of not real good practice just to give a single bid without comparison, for comparison purposes.
Anything you get right now is probably going to be high.
Cause it's... That it is.
It's the end, it's the end of the year, people, right? From what I hear, everybody's got time work, so they'll bet it high, they get it, they're earning money.
Yeah.
Other than somebody that's just strictly doing roof.
Either say you can't get it back until it's crack time right now?
Correct. We could see if you give a price, so if it make anything better, so get the technical error.
And as you said, price will probably go up twenty percent next year.
Oh, that's what they're talking.
Excuse me, does that include ripping out all the insulation that has to be removed after, if it doesn't, does it?
This is a rub off.
It's just a rub, and then we start to have to, and remove the insulation and put all that up, you know?
And, uh, that doesn't count if any of the trusses are rotted or...
Cause when all of us up there, it's really tough, and then he popped up inside the ceiling.
Yeah, it doesn't count for trusses right there, so it could be a thing more.
Yeah.
Sheen or whatever, that's what it's up on.
My, uh, one thought I had, I don't know if this is a good thought, but, um... A little bit more inspection on what the overall project, which has been referred to right here, trusses. Might be, um, assess what we got, what, what we need.
A lot of that you can't, you don't know until you live apart.
Well, you can still do some inspection through the crossbase up in the attic, you know, you know? Probably have to hire somebody to go up there and look, but, you know, I mean, it's no sense, like you say, if there's rotted trusses or rotted, you know, structure, no sense in putting a tin, piece of tin on, on an elevator, dry rotted wood. Just screwing into nothing. You're, you're looking for peril. Perhaps our, um, our zoning administrator could do a little bit of, uh, analysis on that.
Go up there and look.
That'd be great, he could.
Would they, did they say they'd be able to get to us this year yet?
Some of them, yeah.
They're courting, they're fast. Do a good job, maybe in our house.
No, it's gonna be, they've, um, yeah, they've done more than that.
You went a lot of work. Why do you think you do that, huh?
Oh, I could probably go up there this week sometime.
That'd be great.
Or maybe not, just not so much.
Yeah, I'll look into it this week or for the next week.
Yeah. Yeah, just do a...
Can you let us know your findings? I don't know how we would do this, cause you want, you want to get on the schedule, we're going to inspect, you want to...
Well, we could talk, you know, and there...
Cause otherwise it's not going to be until October meeting.
No, but what I'm suggesting is that we just call a special meeting, five minute meeting, and said, boom, let's do it, you know, whatever, ten minute meeting. You don't need to necessarily get paid, but if, as long as we have a forum.
Yeah.
Whatever, you know?
Which is okay, on the thing that premise that Rob does, if I don't be wrong.
I just kind of like to know the findings that he finds when he goes up there.
No doubt.
What nastiness might be there.
So... Um, because if it becomes a big project, you know, we should know, as Tina just kind of stated. If it's not six thousand dollars, it's sixteen thousand dollars, you know, I mean, we, we need to know that.
Can you, uh, can you find out if the Legion's going to ship in?
I could, I could, Dr. Howard.
Yeah, and like, you know, they're not a rich organization.
No, I, I, you know, anything's better than nothing.
No doubt, no doubt, but we need to know what we're dealing with, so, um, you know... With a little bit of prep work and, you know, of, you know, just saying, this is what we found out. We could call us, you know, a quick meeting that says we need to get it done, cause it's not, cause it is getting cold and, and things need to happen before things, whatever. And if we, if, if it becomes something that, you know, that's outrageous, we might just want to patch it, you know, until next, next, next year, I don't know. We need to think about this.
Assuming you have to be able to kind of impose your letter.
I, I like to get what they sent out, or I, I can come by and...
Yeah, well, I'm just wondering, cause we could be, maybe be able to come down with two, because we could have that handled before the next meeting?
Sure.
Mailed, maybe, cause like, I see we're into October by the next meeting, it's like, or something, you know, maybe, maybe?
I can try to get them this week, this weekend.
Well, see what you can come up with, you know, I mean, it will... Why don't you, you can email me and we could go back and forth and, you know, maybe put something together between the two of us and, you know, come up with something.
So, I like, I guess I could probably do something this week, work out this week a little bit.
Yeah. Cause both issues are kind of... Need to be, need, need, we need to do something, you know? Apparently, you know, and, and if we, what's the, uh... Even with a forty percent up, uh, you know, projected increase on steel, uh, it might be worth it to just patch it and, and wait and see what's going on. You know, we need to make that decision. So, uh, so I'm understanding the plan is here that, that Rob's gonna do some assessment, get back to us as soon as he can. Um, and Dave and I are gonna collaborate on the nuisance issue, and then with the, uh, you know, perhaps a special meeting may become, to try and determine what to do with those two issues. Does that sound like what we are okay with, what we decide?
All right, give it a second, Kyle, give me...
Yeah.
Jason's committee, uh, and budgets.
Oh, safety, on safety.
Safety, and budget. Right, um... Sound like a motion.
How's that?
Install Kyle as, as into Jason's whole committee participation.
Do we have to make a motion or is that just?
Sure.
I'll make a motion.
Right.
So it's the safety committee?
Okay. Safety committee and budget committee. Um, motion's made and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
I'm abstaining from that one.
Um... You know, uh, before, earlier in the meeting, uh, Dave, you know, brought up the issue of the mud block. It is within the city limits, there may be some liability issues with that open pit, it is a kind of a dangerous deal going on. Um, nothing against you, Martin, but the city needs to protect its interests as well, and, uh, you know, there needs to be some questions asked about that, so, um... I would like to get an attorney's point of view on that, so... Just to, I mean, if somebody goes in there and, you know, either drowns or, you know, even have to duck, you know, bites of dust or whatever, you know? It's, it's, it's not good, it's not good, so... I would, uh, make a motion to contact the attorney and see what our, our liabilities might then be there. Open mud block, even though it is not even our property. Is there any city exposure to that? Motion to contact the attorney and advocate our first set.
I'll second it.
Motion's made and seconded, discussion.
I don't know if we're really gonna say, talk, contact the attorney, um...
You know, what would, what would?
George.
Yeah.
I'm very willing to sit down with him, I shouldn't say we, but we, we'll sit down and talk about it, but not here at the council meeting.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Well, we've got a motion, we've got a motion on the table, so...
Okay, well, then you, go ahead and contact your lawyer.
Well, I can re-send that, my second campaign.
Well, we're discussing it.
We're discussing it, so, yeah.
That's all.
That's, yeah, the second.
Yeah, we're discussing.
Um, yeah, it's a little bit tender issue, I, I understand that, and, you know, there, there seems to be some, what I could hear before, maybe some loggerheads and some budding heads that, that are happening, and, and that's, that's natural with, with things like this, but again, the city does need to explore its exposure to any downside liability, and that, that is, it has been mentioned to me on, by two other people actually, that, that, you know, that mud block needs, some needs to happen, so, um...
So are you saying this is the, nothing, nothing's been paid attention to for thirty-three years?
I am willing to have dialogue with it, but I just don't see that this, then you is the proper place to have a dialogue about it.
I agree.
So I would like to open it up to sitting down with...
With whom?
I don't know, I'm sure that there's the proper people to sit and talk to, but I don't know, no. I'm open to that suggestion of who that might be, I have my ideas, but you might have different ones.
Well, my, my feeling is, is that the, the hole needs to be filled in, and that would solve the problem. But apparently, I don't know, somebody...
George, the judge, I would like to not have this conversation here because we wanted, we wanted it to go...
This is a council, this is a council decision, okay?
Okay, you're right, go ahead.
What I'm trying to do here is bring it to the, bring, bring to our exposure, our downside liability. I understand that it's a sensitive issue for you, and, but it's, but you're out of this conversation.
Okay.
Okay? This is a council decision.
Okay.
So, um, and I, you know, motion's made and seconded, and we're discussing it. It need, just the same way that I think there was, there was another liability issue, oh yeah, it was, um, you know, um, the harassment issue that needed to be exposed, that, that needed to be explored by the lawyer, and, and, and found out whether or not, and there needs to be some addressment of the issue. Perhaps, maybe not, maybe a five minute phone call says, no, you're, 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 you're out of the mix. Yes, we're, we're a part of the mix, but, hold on. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed.
Aye.
Three ayes, motion fails. Okay. Um... Yep, so it remains open, okay. Uh... I think that's about all we've got. Let's see if we have, sorry. A motion adjourned.
Make the motion adjourned.
Motion's made.
I'll second it.
Seconded.
Yeah.
If she, all those in favor say aye.
About time, you know, well, time's running out, you know, there is.
You should have told us first.
Yeah. That'd be the comment I said.
Free job?
I don't have the words. It feels like it's open by, by all the, the parts at the same time, you know? Man, we're not saying, you jerk, jerk, like the man.
Do you want to sign your own? Yeah, the signal, the beep, or?
Somebody contacted the big shop up there.
What's that? I'm not literally using you. Are you threatening me? Are you threatening me?
Um, so.
Can we make a copy of that?
You can, although I.
Just a copy.
But I can't, I can't, I can't. And that's what we let her just walk down. Okay, so that's why I said let's have some doubt.
Not that.
I can't, I can't talk. No, and you don't wanna talk about. No, I. They get it, we, you know. Yeah, but because I don't care about what's to avoid, but I need to, sometimes you need to.
Oh.
That's what, well, I'm sorry, thirty-three years, that's what's on, that's what we have.
Okay.
Everybody, I know, everybody really think that, oh, I think that the best now, I think that was separate now, I'm saying. But they were closing their eyes too.
Time.
They were closing their eyes too.
Yeah, we'll figure, we'll get it.
So if we can, if we can kind of just.
Yeah, and yeah.
So that's what we said, we're like, guys, guys, sorry. I don't care. We'll get it. I'll watch.
You were saying, I'm going along with your whole, with the, you're going to value it, right? Yes, it's a kind of me.
You can, uh, yeah. Sir.
Job.
Do we have another fire department, another fire?
He's, uh, interviewing for the emergency medical response.
Oh, how exciting.
We're gonna have as many of them as we have.
Kinda took a while, but. We'll have time, we'll see, I got it.
All right.
All right, good to see you.
What did you have to ask George?
Well, I asked, I asked him, I says, it's John, John Fair, right? You know, it's like, yeah, I said, yeah. He knew me, well.
Back to Kyle off when I saw him, Fair. Yes, you did. He caught me the way. So I apologize for. That's all right, that's all right. Then Brittany's like, there's a EMR application on my desk. I was like, what? Usually I'm well aware of somebody, I'm gonna drop it off and I'll let you know, okay, and then I was like, what? We already talked about it. We did, we did, and then I was supposed to actually get you, but then I didn't, I dropped the ball on him, so my apologies.
Yeah, it happens to most of us. So, man. Well, cool, so. So how long are you for the last week? Where are you living?
Uh, I live in one of my houses. Between Moose Lake and Barn, so.
Okay, and where I'm.
I'm trying to just, I don't know, he was the process of transferring to Moose Lake, so.
Well, we're, um.
I know it's not in the fire district, so that's, that's why I can't talk to Kyle about it, so.
Right, and that's kinda is that an impediment?
It doesn't, you know, as far as our requirements are, it's twenty minutes to the hall. There's no, you have to live in our coverage area. We have a firefighter, so there's Moose Lake right down. And he's getting here.
See me?
Uh.
Really?
Yeah.
Amazing.
He makes it, well, we have item responding, so as long as, and I just stress to him and I'll stress to you once you're on, use it, because if I know you're coming and I can wait for you, I will, otherwise we'll call, call you and say, okay, if you don't go on, to me does not seem whatever, you know, because a lot of times it's a medical thing, we're gonna wanna get that. But, you know, I can hook you up with a bag that has a few more things too, so you can just get right there, kind of thing, it's not a, right? There's other one, others of us who will grab the way and get there with all the stuff, so. That's not a concern. You've read the job description before?
I'm assuming, yeah, before, yeah.
I wrote the educational work. And what should you do, since I had to get in, in my printer didn't wanna work. Yeah, I need to be happy to attend a session, you all have to pay for a test at one.
So.
I don't appreciate that.
I cut it for me. Even though she didn't show.
I think it's true, I don't know, or is it?
No, I, yeah, I thought it was last week. That's her name?
Okay.
And.
Just for today. Huh? So, I forget everybody's.
She didn't charge you the change?
No. I'm going, I feel bad. I know, but I need a little, it was ten, so it was, I gotta call third. I'm going, so. So, so we meet the last Thursday of the month.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
On the Saturday.
Okay.
That's true.
I see Thursday, I'm sorry, Tuesday, whatever, let's see later.
I thought you said Thursday.
I did, I didn't suppose it's the last. But since you'll need to go for training before you can really join, we're going through our certification right now. Do you have any questions or concerns about requirements of the job?